Call to order, the October 20th, 2020, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and a requirement to attend can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen may do so on their televisions by turning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channels 26, or best way, go online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance and members of the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town of North Andover website an audio or video or recording, a transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceeding as soon as possible. If any members of the public would like to participate, please email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to our Planning Director Gene Enright. Her email is G E N R I G H T at northandoverma.gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceeding. Excuse me, and responded to accordingly. Okay. Why don't we start with bond release, 158 Dale Street, Kevin McClellan. Request for release of $4,000 performance bond associated with a watershed special permit approved September 3, 2013, 2013, is that right, Gene?
Yep.
Okay, a long time coming.
Yes. All right, so, um, so as you indicated, the permit was granted in 2013 to allow construction of a bluestone patio, extension of a gas line from the existing dwelling unit to a fire pit area, extension of a gravel driveway, and installation of two dry wells for roof runoff. The decision conditioned an ASBIL plan stamped by a registered professional engineer in Mass that shows all construction, including the new patio, expanded driveways, stormwater structures, and other pertinent features. The gravel driveway has not been expanded, so he opted not to extend that. Your packet includes photos of the constructed patio, evidence of the roof drains piped to dry wells, and a retaining wall that was constructed to support the patio. In addition, the applicant has provided evidence of the installation of the underground drainage system, which includes a copy of invoices for labor and materials, pictures of piping, deep box inspection ports for storm tech structures, and a map locating each of the structures. Lastly, the packet also includes a copy of the required deed restriction that was conditioned in the decision. So, given the evidence provided, the applicant is respectively requesting that the board waive the requirement of the ASBIL plan in order to release the bond. The original project engineer is no longer in business. I have visited the site and it appears the construction was in accordance with the plan, with the exception of the expanded gravel driveway and the construction of the retaining wall, which they found necessary once they began construction of the patio. So I have pictures of all of that in your packet, including the copies of the invoices and the map locating the distances for each of the underground stormwater drainage system.
Okay, from your perspective, Gene, any issues in releasing the remaining bond money?
No, I mean, it's obvious the patio dimensions were constructed to the plan. I like the fact that all the pictures and supporting evidence of the underground system is in place. And it looked like a real professional job. The retaining wall was required, but he has added a planting bed on the top of the retaining wall adjacent to the patio.
Okay. Uh, is there any, anybody have any questions or comments?
This is Aaron. This is Aaron. Hey, I, 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 it's, I'm, I'm in favor of releasing the bond, but I was just wondering if there's any kind of guidelines in terms of when, when, when the project gets fully signed off by the building commissioner, when the certificate of occupancy or whatever their sign-offs are required are met. Is there any kind of timeline to come back to us to release this bond? Because this is like, you know, seven years since the permit was granted. And, you know, and in this instance, you know, we had an engineer that went out of business that could have done the ASBIL, but unfortunately, we don't have that. And I'm just thinking like in the future, you know, we should be requesting an ASBIL, you know, within some reasonable timeframe after the project's closed out by the building commissioner.
Yeah, so, so Aaron, to speak to that, I mean, I don't know that this project necessarily required a certificate of occupancy because it's an outdoor patio. But we don't have any time limit associated with that, and we have many older bonds that unfortunately, until recently, you've approved some bonds at only 2,000, and it often costs more than that to do an ASBIL. And we found that in other projects as well. So this is 4,000, it could probably be done for less than 4,000, but it would probably be about 1,000. And some of the delay has been him trying to get an engineer out to do it, and he hasn't been able to. So the work was done some time ago, I would say. But there's been various times over the past couple of years where Kevin has reached out trying to progress this release.
Is, this is Aton, is there a way or an appetite for someone to see what bonds are out there, especially older ones, and check in on them to see if they're, we could move them along? Because it would be nice not to just have, I mean, I guess to an extent it's at the applicant's risk, but it would be nice if there are older ones just to move them along and get them to a final, you know, resting place.
Yeah, we do it to the degree we can. I mean, I can't tell you how many times I contacted Chad Lawler and said, give me your ASBIL plan. And, um, so to the extent we can, we do. I would say the larger ones and the oldest ones that are associated with subdivisions that have never been actually closed out, and so there's still drainage issues and things like that. So they're the most significant ones. These, these 2,000 and 4,000 usually people react to them pretty quickly.
Okay. Can we get a motion to approve the release of the remaining bond funds for 158 Dale Street?
This is Aaron, I'll make a motion.
Uh, I'll second.
Uh, roll call vote, John?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
I vote yes, Peter?
Yes.
And Kate?
Yes.
Okay, that's approved.
John, you may, you were likely the only one on the board at the time. And you may recall, that was the old, I think Ashton Smith House at the corner of Dale and Appleton with the end of the one-way Dale Street.
Right, yeah.
So that was that permit. I think you were the only one on the bond.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, uh, new public hearings, 127 Turnpike Street, Eaglewood Shops, Linear Retail, North Andover Number One LLC. Application for a site plan review special permit modification under Article 8, Part 3, including parking special permit under Article 8, Part 1, Article 10, 185, 10.7 of the North Andover zoning bylaw. The applicant proposes to provide for the modification of parking and related improvements. No changes to the existing building or lot are proposed. Properties located in the general business zoning district. I will note that pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, orders imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right under requirement to attend. This hearing can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. Members of the public who wish to watch may do so by turning to Channel 8 on Comcast, Channel 26 on Verizon, or going to www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance. Members of the public of board members or of the applicant will be allowed. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. In the event that we are unable to do so, we will post a transcript or audio or video recording or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible. If any members of the public would like to participate in the public hearing, please email your question to our Planning Director Gene Enright at J E N R I G H T at northandoverma.gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. All right, Gene, why don't you give us a summary of this new public hearing? Then we can hear from the applicant. We can do any comments that we've received, and then we can ask questions and make comments.
Okay, so this application proposes no changes to the existing buildings or to the property. The applicant is seeking a parking special permit to enable the applicant to reduce currently required parking requirements due to a combination of varying peak parking plans and other factors that will be discussed tonight. In addition, the applicant is requesting a modification to the original site plan review special permit, which conditioned the amount of restaurant square footage to be approximately 9,000 square feet as the project was envisioned to be a quasi lifestyle center that featured retailers that were traditionally mall-based. Since then, two insubstantial change decisions have been approved by the board to allow for an increase in restaurant square footage to what is now 18,302 square feet. Presently, the more active retailers looking for space include food, either fast or casual, fitness and medical. The applicant is requesting an allowance for 20,910 square feet of total restaurant use. Lastly, the applicant is requesting an amendment to condition number 6 dot F of the 2004 cycle and review decision in order to facilitate and streamline the review of future changes in tenants. I will add that in your meeting packet I received in a butter comment this morning, so it has been put in there, and it is referencing a letter to the editor in the Eagle Tribune from November of 16 regarding sidewalk construction, I believe, which would start at approximately the YMCA and run to the intersection at Route 114 and 133, essentially the Burger King intersection there. So that has been included in your packet. I have an email out to my contact for the Mass DOT Route 114 Improvement Project to see if that project does contemplate any type of extension of a sidewalk on Route 133. So I just haven't had that confirmed yet.
Okay. So why don't we hear from the applicant about what they're proposing?
Aton, this is Kate, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
All right, so who's talking about this one?
It's John Smolak, Smolak of On, from Linear Retail, North Andover Number One LLC. The applicant also with me is Greg Drose, who is Vice President of Asset Management at Linear Retail Properties. Also with me participating is Jeffrey Dirk, managing partner of Vanessa Associates. So as, as in addition to what Gene indicated, and Gene provided a precise summary of why we are here for the relief. As you recall, back in July, the board had approved a site plan waiver to enable the Five Guys Restaurant to locate to the existing vacant space at Eaglewood. And at that time, we indicated we'd return back to the board to follow up with respect to cleanup of parking matters. And so, as Gene indicated, we're requesting board approval for a site plan decision modification, which includes a request for a parking reduction special permit as well as certain language changes to special conditions except of the board's 2004 decision. So again, as Gina indicated, to allow for a little more streamlined review of this in the future. And so, so just in terms of the materials that were provided to you, we provided a slide deck. And everyone is aware of where this site is, the Eaglewood Plaza. On the second page of the slide, we include sort of an aerial of the plaza itself. As you know, it contains a little over 76,000 square feet of building area, spread over three buildings. To the north of, or the far right of the slide is the boundary of Staples, which is included within the plaza, beyond which is the Walgreens and Petco, and then Waverly Road and the Lawrence City Line. Then to the south of the, or the far left side is Burton's, which is the edge of our, end of our property, beyond which there's an existing building, and then the intersection of Peter Street and Route 114. To the west or to the back of the site is Cochran Ridge Condos, in, actually in the town of Andover. And then, of course, to the east is Route 114, and beyond which is the Tribune, Eagle Tribune property. So, um, at this time, what I'd like to do is turn the discussion over to Greg Drose of Linear to again discuss the, sort of, the current conditions of the plaza and the reason why we're requesting the relief in conjunction with the presentation by Jeffrey Dirk.
Sure, thanks, John, and thanks, everyone. So I think when we were back before the board, probably 60 days or so ago in the summer, I kind of laid out what we were seeing in terms of retail at the plaza, not only in response to online shopping that's evolved since this plaza was developed in 2005, but you know, the pandemic as well. So on Slide 3, after the aerial, it gives an overview of which tenants are currently in the plaza. The yellow highlighted sections are where we currently have vacancy within the plaza. The leftmost vacancy, to the left of Doctors Express is the Pier 1. And then to the right of the future Five Guys is the Joseph A. Bank, which, when we discussed earlier this summer, was still operating at the plaza, but it was, the writing was on the wall as a chain that they were not doing well, and we did anticipate that they would leave. Some of the other tenants that we, you know, as things progress here, that we see departing the center in the not-too-distant future would be Chico's and Yankee Candle, which are also mall-based tenants. We see them consolidating back to either Salem or the North Shore Mall and vacating the plaza. This kind of leaves us with a significant amount of vacancy that we will look to backfill. Subdivide some of the spaces, the Pier 1, which is currently 11,000 square feet, will likely be more than one tenant, just because of who is out there in the market looking these days. And same with the Joseph A. Bank. And kind of what we're seeing as a portfolio as a whole across, we have now 88 properties in Massachusetts, New Hampshire, and Rhode Island are the service, food, and fitness categories are really the most active. Food slowed down a little bit with, with COVID, but we still see that as picking up as we come out of this. So we're before you as we try to backfill these vacancies and, and, you know, add some new tenants to the plaza to try and find a way to streamline that and a shared parking concept.
All right, now, what else we got?
And if Jeffrey Dirk is, can further in terms of the rationale for the parking?
Yeah, thank you. I apologize for the abrupt transition there, Mr. Chairman. And for the record, my name is Jeffrey Dirk, I'm a partner with Vanessa Associates. And as John had mentioned at the introduction of the project, we conducted a parking demand study for the project site, and these, the study was done pre-COVID, so it was done early last year when the plaza was at that time fully occupied. And the intent of the analysis that we had conducted was really to look at what the actual parking demands are for the center, given the fact that, you know, standard zoning analysis, as you're probably all familiar with, when you've got mixes of uses, it typically doesn't represent the interaction that happens between uses, but also the dynamics of parking demands in that some uses have peaks that occur off of the peaks of other uses. And so you ultimately end up with parking supplies that if you design to the zoning maximums, you have parking that is under, the parking is actually underutilized, that you actually have more parking than is required just because of the dynamics. And so the intent of our study was to assess how those dynamics relate to this plaza in particular, and the mix of uses that are there. And so as a, as a part of the study, we conducted observations over a 12-hour period on both a weekday and a weekend. And what the findings of the study showed was that the maximum observed occupancy actually occurred in the evening on a weekday, and that was when the restaurants were more or less at their highest demands. And only about 62% of the available parking supply at that time was found to be utilized. And even with adjustment to account for seasonality, looking at like peak shopping season time period, so during the holiday season, we still found that the available parking supply, oh, you'd only have about 70 to 75% utilization. So that, that said to us, it basically proved out the fact that designing to the zoning maximum, in this case, would result in an oversupply of parking. And I think to the extent that we're talking about changes in the tenant use, the analysis has shown that the fluctuation in the parking demands and the fact that we've got almost a 25% reserve in terms of parking supply wouldn't indicate that those, that there is sufficient demand to accommodate for these changes in the tenants, and we would have sufficient reserve capacity. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have now or later on in the presentation.
So I guess I have a question. So early on, before COVID, you were seeing 62% use, is that right?
That's correct, during the peak demand period.
Ben, what we're hearing though is that a lot of the stores are either vacant or not doing well, right? And that's why we're changing to more fast food, more service-based, away from retail. That totally makes sense. But you would figure if you're now bringing in stores that are going to actually bring people to these, this parking lot, that that number will go up. And so the question of how much is in use, the question is how much? So how can, if we add a Five Guys, which is probably busiest lunch and dinner, but has some during the day, but then also add a fast casual, which may be the same, a dentist, which is probably nine to five, a dry goods, another one that's vacant, and the Five Guys. How can we estimate what the amount of use will now be?
At the time that we did the observations, the center was fully occupied, so some of those vacancies at that time weren't there. But what I would say in terms of the mixes of the uses that you're talking about, and the Five Guys is a perfect example. What we found in terms of our demand observations was that your, your peak is actually happening after 5 o'clock. So it's during the evening time period is when it's happening. So uses such as the fast casual and, and fast food in general, they're going to peak, as you described, generally around the lunchtime time period. And that's going to be offset from when the peak of like a dry good retailer is going to happen. Whereas they're going to more or less peak, you know, more closer to the midday time period, but also on a Saturday, which is actually when we saw that there was more, more availability of parking within the center. So the uses that we're talking about and the ebbs and flows in those uses, I think, are just going to, it, it, it's not necessarily going to change the conditions from what we previously analyzed. I would think that where you would have more concern would be if a user is there that is going to result in longer stays in the parking lot. And because that, the turnover of the spaces is really the critical thing. And that's why you can see that, like a McDonald's restaurant, Wendy's, or something like that, which hopefully for that matter, they can operate with a small number of parking spaces just because the spaces turnover so quickly. And so the, the uses that we're talking about are not things where there's going to be a long duration of stay. And so that would still get us in the range of saying, you know, high turnover type of uses, you would have sufficient parking, so it would still be in line with our study.
I, this is John, can I ask a totally dumb question? And I may be looking at all the wrong places, but I'm looking at your slide deck of six slides. I understand you're assessing what your parking requirement is, but it's still unclear to me what you're proposing to change. And have I totally missed that? Because I, I mean, like, if you're going to reduce the parking, what does that mean?
If I could respond to that, it's John Smolak. The, we had run the parking calculations by the building inspector based on our current uses and likely future uses, which is the slide beyond the last slide that Jeffrey Dirk was, was referring to. And he came up with a total of a need for 561 parking spaces. And where 430 are provided, so it's a parking reduction of about 131 spaces.
But is it solely?
John?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but are you doing this solely because the building inspector said you have a problem? I mean?
I, John, I can answer it, I think. I think your question is, so I think as I understand the proposal, the proposal is to keep everything as it is. But they were told that if you wanted to keep everything as it is in terms of the layout and add these different uses now that we've permitted, you're going to need to add more parking spots. So they don't want to add anymore, they want to go with what is there currently. So is that fair, John, Mr. Smolak?
Yeah, yes, we want to maintain a viable plaza. And, um, you know, I think that when this plaza, obviously when this plaza was, was developed, you know, 16 years ago now, or 15 years ago, after the approval. I mean, it was a little bit of a different mix, but it's also a different parking utilization as well that's out there. And so I, you know, I understood the reason back in 2004, while the, why the board wanted to sort of limit certain restaurant uses to 9,000 square feet back then, but we're up to over 18,000 square feet now, and we think the plaza operates, operates well with their existing mix. And so, um, again, we're obviously not making any changes, but in order to have a plaza that's viable, that reflects the market, we, we need to have some flexibility in parking spaces. In addition to that, you know, in terms of, of the decision that the board issued back in 2004, it required us, the, the owner to come back to the board for any changes in terms of restaurant use. And what we're proposing is sort of a streamline, uh, streamlining of that. Basically, before any additional restaurant use beyond a certain square footage is proposed, that both the building inspector and the planning director review it for parking adequacy of parking utilization. And so rather than coming to the board every time to request a change, this sort of provides a little more of a streamlined review process. But I mean, that's, that's, that's the bottom line of what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay, good. So let's say hypothetically speaking, this, this is a hypothetical. Uh, the, you know, we look at all this data, we say, yeah, it kind of makes sense. And then, in reality, uh, there, there's vastly more parking, and it's pretty obvious. You know, again, it's, it's a hypothetical. What flexibility would you have at that point, you know, if you were over by 10% or 15%? I'm making this up, to adjust at that point down the road?
Speaking out loud, I mean, we'd have to take a look at our vacancies, and we may be constrained by our existing vacancies before adding additional space. And, and to that end, we, I would gather that the, the building inspector may have to put in place a hold on any future build-out as a result of sort of hitting the max on parking.
And I'll just add, as a, as an owner of many retail properties and convenience-oriented retail properties in particular, parking is always a concern to us, you know, as we want to attract retailers to the center, showing that there's adequate parking for the tenant's customers is of the utmost importance to us. So we look at this on a consistent basis or in a constant basis in terms of what uses would interact with each other in terms of overlap, where there's tenants and synergies who are going to multiple uses at a center at one time, somebody going to the gym and then going out to eat, where they're staying there for a little bit longer and you're going to multiple uses. So we, we look at it, it's important to our tenants, it's important to our tenants' customers that there's enough parking, and it's something that's at the forefront of our mind to make sure that we're not overburdening that parking by putting in tenants that would affect that.
And if I may, if I may add this.
Go ahead, John.
That's John Smolak. If I may add one other item, and that is the parking table itself. This was put together, I mean, the last revision to the parking table, if I'm not mistaken, may have been 98, or, I mean, a major overhaul where we updated the parking counts. And it may also be a function of the fact that the counts that are identified at that time really have changed over the years, I mean, in terms of demand. So, uh, what may seem like a significant reduction may actually be a fact that maybe, you know, the, the parking chart or parking table needs to be sort of revisited to see whether it reflects reality in today's world. So, um, I think there's, it's 15 per thousand for, for the food use, which is a significant amount. But, uh, you know, especially for a Five Guys, are you going to have, how many times are you going to have this 15 people at a Five Guys at a particular time? And, uh, at a particular time? And so that's, you know, that's another factor to consider as well. I'm not saying that we rewrite the parking table. I'm just simply saying that there may be a little bit of parking inflation these days in terms of our, the way the town's table is reflected.
I mean, my point is primarily, I kind of intuitively agree with you guys. I haven't parsed the detailed study. It's finally as, you know, obviously the consultants or, or tell staff, but it instinctively feels to me, we have a substantial cushion still. But one of the things I, I've learned from all the years of the planning board is that it's always good to have sort of a backup or a fallback. If it turns out what you think is going to happen, doesn't happen. And that's what we're doing in a lot of site. Views are asking people to come back in a year and sort of say, how's it going? And I, I feel like this is one of those examples. I, I believe you, but I, I want to verify it sometime down the road. That's sort of probably the path I want to go down here.
And I guess the, the other, if I may, it's John Smolak again. If I, if I may add, I mean, another possibility down the road, if, if, if we ever, you know, in, in, in the unlikely situation that we ever run into a parking crunch. I mean, we'd have to revisit the board too, at, at some point, and maybe it's, it's offsite parking across the way. I mean, you have the Tribune there that is totally underparked. I mean, that could be a possibility. I'm, I'm just again, throwing that out loud as a, as a possibility, as another item that's, that's possible in the future, or you know, if we ever have to have a discussion with North Park Bank, maybe there's even parking there, which is right there. So I think there are a lot of options out there in addition to, to policing, which, you know, the building inspector would be able to do as well.
One, one of the interesting and also challenges of this parking lot is, is, and this property is that it's kind of separated into two. And then you have the Staples, which frankly, I'm not sure how they're still in business, given their, you know, the retail aspect of that, of the large retail store where most stuff can be done online. And there's a significant amount of parking over there, but it's not particularly easy to walk from there to the other locations, even though it's close. So I guess one question is, is there any thoughts on how to make, potentially make that an easier, potentially walking transition to use some of that parking, which I think is often underutilized in the Staples portion of the lot versus the other portion of the lot?
From a landlord perspective, we've tried to use that lot for employee parking for the tenants, given the underutilization. So freeing up those spaces on the upper level by trying to enforce employees parking on the lower level. But I know that, that there will be some improvements coming along 114 there with the multimodal path on our, our side, which will hopefully open up that possibility. And I think there's going to be a new walkway down there that will allow people to move from lower level to the upper level, I guess, more freely.
One other question or comment I had, John, as you may, I, I have no problem personally with the idea of streamlining. So they don't have to come back to the board for every kind of nuance. But you mentioned, you know, looking at the parking, but I'd also want to look at the traffic, right? So for each, if there's a new restaurant, depending on the type of use, it will affect traffic, right? Just like I think Jeff mentioned, you know, yeah, a Five Guys is probably quick in, quick out. That may be the same as a McDonald's. So if we have a lot of quick ins and quick outs, how does that affect the traffic patterns? And is there, if there's too many of those, does that become an issue? So I just kind of would want to have the planning and building inspector also take a peek at that. And if anything, there are any red flags on traffic, that that should come back to the board too.
That's a good point. And I think that the revised condition requires that there be a demonstration that there's adequate additional parking with respect to the site. And that's going to be a determination by the building inspector and the planning director.
Okay. Aaron, any questions or comments?
No, my, I, I, I echo the comment you just made about the, the, you know, essentially the plaza is separated into two lots. That, that, that's a bit of a concern, but anecdotally, being there over the last few years, I've never seen a condition, at, at least with the, the mix of uses that it's had in the past, that, that's come even close to being full, except for maybe near the Burton's end. But so i- i- if, if we gave them a, a bit of leeway in terms of the additional restaurant type use, I, I think that would be acceptable to a limit. And maybe if, if it's proposed to go over that limit, then that's a, a, they come back and see us.
Okay, Peter?
All set. Thanks.
Okay, Kelly? Still on mute? I'll pass on Kelly for now. Kelly, yes?
Kelly, can you check your computer volume itself to see if your volume's up?
What, what's that?
I'm just asking Kelly to check her computer volume. So she has unmuted herself, but we still can't hear. Nope.
All right, we'll pass on Kelly. Oh, wait.
All right, do you, can you hear her now?
Yes.
Sorry. Quick question, apologies. So my question was with the change, just curious, curious, with the change in the type of retail to the, the fast casual restaurants, are you seeing or would you anticipate a change in how the customers get there from cars to public transportation? So just wondering if that plays into it at all with it, with the change of type of customers? Is that a consideration?
So I can, I can try to answer that in terms of the, the demographics. I mean, as long as, what I would say is that you know, the mode of transportation probably won't change too much. We would see the changes if you added like a drive through or something like that. I mean, clearly that's, that's auto centric. I do expect, I mean, with the improvements that Mass DOT is going to make out there with the multi-use path, I do expect you will see a shift in terms of that, the mode shift. There should be a mode shift just because of that. And I think to the extent that, you know, the, the project embraces that, which it, which it has and starts to provide, you know, bicycle racks and things like that, which I'm sure they will do. Then you will definitely get the, you will get a mode shift. I think it'll draw different demographics of customer and hopefully offset that parking demand.
I would think with the improved sidewalks and modality and it being say a Five Guys and another fast casual rather than Joseph A. Bank and Chico's and Yankee Candle, you're more likely to get Merrimack College students coming down via pedestrian means. So I don't know that it'll be a giant difference, but some.
Yeah. And that's a, that's a net positive, as you'd said. I mean, I guess if you look at it from that standpoint of the change in the tenant base, which would focus more on kind of that market demographic, providing those pedestrian and bicycle connections, they're less likely to jump in a car if they can walk or bike down here safely. So I, I think that's, that's a very good point.
Okay, Gene, what's next for, for us?
So I would just like to ask, ask Jeffrey one question. So my, my understanding on the engineering standard is 85% would be considered capacity, right? Is that, is that the Machi would use? I know you're, you're talking about 62 and I think 72 tonight, but.
Yeah, you're, you're absolutely right. We, 85% capacity is what we typically want to have because it just, I mean, to the extent, even if you've got site plan conditions that say clear the snow and everything like that, you want to reserve capacity just because there will be some snow at some point, even if they truck it offsite, they've got to put it someplace. The other thing is, although we, every, we'd like everybody to park perfectly between the lines, they don't. And then you know, that results in some parking inefficiency, you know, and then, you know, who knows with, with COVID, as we've got now, people are less inclined to park, to park next to each other. So I think we should be considering the fact that, you know, that, that dynamic as well. So you're a hundred percent right. It's a long way of saying absolutely 85% is our ideal design capacity.
Okay. So I mean, if the board is considering a decision, then I could draft a decision for consideration next meeting. And I don't think there's any additional information that they could provide other than what's in the application itself.
But I was going to, let me read into the record, the butter comment. So Gene, you had mentioned in a butter comment, we got an email from Karen Lambert on Monday, October 19th at 6:20 PM. Dear North Andover Planning Committee, on November 17th, 2016, the Eagle Tribune published a letter to the editor regarding the need for sidewalks on Route 133 up to its intersection with Route 114. This very short distance spans the two towns, Andover and North Andover. There are currently hundreds of Andover residents within walking distance of the Eagle Shopping Plaza. Yet, due to traffic concerns and lack of sidewalk, the plaza remains dangerously within our reach. Beyond just pedestrian and traffic safety, a change could have positive economic benefits for the mall. I'm not sure if a potential sidewalk is in the scope of tonight's meeting agenda, but since the parties seem relevant, i.e. planning board and property management, I want to take the opportunity to communicate this outstanding issue once again. This letter received very positive political response at the time. And then there's a link to this 2016 article. Thank you for your time and attention. Okay.
Hey, John, I have, I have a couple of comments as well that have just come in.
That's what I was going to ask. Great.
All right. So this is Ellie Wadika. Came in 13 minutes ago. Does this mean they are going to have a drive through in place of parking? I am, and it just ends that way.
The answer to that is no, correct?
Correct.
Yes, there is no drive through. That would be a much different parking and traffic situation. So no drive throughs have been proposed or allowed at the moment.
And so this has kind regards from Alex Wadika. And it says, can you kindly elaborate on the sidewalk from YMCA to the intersection? Will it be on Coachman's side of the YMCA? And I can elaborate that. I, there, there is no certainty as to a sidewalk being installed from the YMCA. I simply said that I will reach out to Mass DOT representatives for the project, for the Route 114 improvement project to see if it contemplates any extension of a sidewalk in that direction. And so I'll have that information for next week's board meeting.
And that project, the 114 improvement project is ongoing and completely independent of this particular application, correct, Jean?
Correct. So I, I think what the comment sent this morning was kind of insinuating is we have a planning board, we have property owners. Is there any, you know, consideration of a sidewalk as part of this project?
Right. So it seemed a sidewalk, great idea, but that's part of the Mass DOT improvement project that is going on currently. And this product, this particular application doesn't call for any changes in curb cuts or anything like that. So anything that Mass DOT does can be done independently of what we're talking about here.
Right. And I believe that so Route 133 that extends to Andover is a state road as well.
Correct.
And to clarify, I don't know if the improvement project contemplates any sidewalk in this area, but I'll just reach out to confirm.
Okay, great. Then thank you to the people who provided those comments. Any other comments, Jean?
Nope, that is it.
Okay. So why don't we continue this one until our next meeting? And try to have a draft decision for that date. And if you could incorporate kind of the discussion we had and kind of what we'd like to see in terms of how permissive we can be in giving out some of our responsibility of having to come back to the board when it's in terms of traffic and parking and things like that.
Yep.
Okay, when's, when is our next meeting? It's not November 2nd, right?
It is. No, because that's an election night. It is not till November 24th. However, as you know, you have Trinity later on the schedule. And so I was going to raise the concern as to whether you thought it would be appropriate to try to fit a meeting in. It likely would have to be a Wednesday or Thursday night, but um, I, that will come up later. So.
Okay.
And, and you, you could isolate that one to be for Trinity discussion only if you felt necessary. It wouldn't be a regularly scheduled meeting.
There's an election coming up?
There's an election.
That's news. Okay. All right. So we'll figure that out. So we'll continue to, to our next meeting whenever that date is. To be determined. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just want to make sure that, that before the, the meeting ends tonight, that we continue that hearing to a time and date certain. That's all.
Okay. Also, our next, currently our next meeting is scheduled for November 24th. So right now, let's continue it until November 24th. If we wind up having a meeting before that and everything's ready, we can potentially talk about moving that hearing. But for now, November 24th. Which is the next one. Okay, great.
So Aton, I'd like to suggest, since John's on the line, do you want to take into consideration the extension of the subdivision plan for 1600 Osgood Street?
Yes.
Love to do that.
Okay. So as you know, that we had a subdivision filed with the broader project. However, the applicants had opted to just can, continue that to the December 1st meeting to keep it as a placeholder should they want to pursue in the future. Since we only had the November 24th meeting, I requested that this extension be submitted tonight, just in case there was any type of forum issue at the 24. And so now the applicant is requesting to continue it to June 1st of 2021.
It says June 15th.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So June 15th.
I'm just looking at the agenda. I just.
I'm looking for the form itself right now.
And that would be subject to the board's approval of the meeting schedule, I guess, which would be June 15th of 2021. That's later on today.
Yes.
June 15th. Okay. We've got a motion to approve the request for an extension for the application for definitive subdivision approval, 1600 Osgood Street, and extending the application deadline to June 15th, 2021.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Simons. Can we get a second, please?
This is Aaron. I'll second.
Seconded. Okay, roll call vote. John?
Uh, yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter? Here?
Peter, yo.
Okay, we'll consider him abstaining. We only need three, right?
Yeah.
All right, three.
Okay. So Kelly recused herself again, right?
Uh, Kate did, yes.
Kate did. I'm sorry. And Peter, are you on the line? Wow.
So he might be muted.
Yeah, he said he can no longer unmute. Peter, did you try star sex? He said he did try star sex.
Can he type? There's a chat.
He's on the phone, Aton. He's, can't use the chat.
Oh. Well, then. Thought that would be kind of fun. Okay, well, is a three, nothing vote? Enough? I would think it is. It's not a.
Yeah, it's, yeah, just majority.
All right, so we'll go three oh, uh, and with one abstention. Uh, okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, yes, all right. Well, Peter will, maybe he can sign off and sign back on again. Kate's back. Let's do discussion item twelve seventy Turnpike Street. Deborah Colbert, uh, application, applicant requests an insubstantial change to an October thirty-first, two thousand and one site plan review special permit to allow for additional parking, stormwater mitigation, and changes to landscaping. The property is located in the Village Commercial Zoning District. Uh, Jean, what can you tell us about this? And then we'll go to the applicant.
Okay, so again, this is just a discussion item. Um, request for insubstantial change to allow for additional parking spaces and revisions to landscape. The original O-one special permit approved eighteen parking spaces. The applicant is requesting construction plus respurting to allow for an addition eleven. And now I'm kind of questioning that. I don't know if I counted the two parallel spaces, so it may be thirteen as we get into. Ten of these spaces would be located within the pumping station easement area on the site. So I've included an aerial photo. If you could open the aerial photo, you'll see to the right is a town pumping station. Currently, there's no parking spaces delineated on that side of the lot. The original site plan and landscape plan are included in your packet as approved landscape areas and snow storage areas are being impacted by this proposal. Um, I had asked the DPW to review the proposed spaces and circulation around the pumping station, and I just received their comments shortly before the meeting. They were not supportive of some of those spaces, and they have some information that needs to be confirmed before they are supportive of others. So specifically, the three behind the pumping station, they call it to the north. They are not supporter, supportive of, um, when they need to pump the station out or have to refill the propane tanks, they need that area. There's a concrete step located on the easterly side of the woodshed is proposed to be saw cut to increase the travel width. The remaining concrete step needs to meet the requirements of the proper width of a step for access to the woodshed. This would need to be confirmed. The travel lane on the westerly side of the building is currently fifteen feet. This travel width needs to be maintained for access of both the propane fill tank and the sewer proper tank. If the existing width plus the proposed two parallel parking space can be maintained, they don't have an issue with the two proposed parallel spaces. And they have no concerns with the seven spaces along Route one fourteen. Um, and so the reason I point out the landscape plan and the original site plan, the original site plan calls for a snow storage area in that grassed area running parallel to Route one fourteen. I don't see a revised snow storage area on the proposed plan. In addition, there was pretty significant amount of landscaping, and the decision you have really points out the purpose of it was screening from one fourteen. The, the decision condition at the time of release of bond, the planner could request additional landscaping if deemed necessary. However, the clause that it must be maintained in perpetuity is not in this decision. However, findings of facts certainly point to the importance of landscaping. And so if you can take a quick look at the landscape plan, you'll see there was annual planters proposed. There were boxwood trees proposed to screen the parking areas in the front and the side. And there were trees back along a picnic area on the adjacent to the building. So I think just over time, a lot of the existing landscaping just probably has not survived, but it hasn't been replaced either. And so I, I just want to point that out. And then, um, Deb can speak to what the proposal going forward would be in terms of landscaping.
One question before we get to that, at least that I have before we get to that, and we'll see if anyone else has questions, and then we can have the applicant, um, tell us about the proposal. The pump station easement, can you just tell us a little bit more about who owned, who, whose easement is it for what? What are the lengths and boundaries of the easement or what's allowed? I just need some more details on that.
Yeah, I would have to get that. I, um, I don't see it clearly called out on this document, but it's an easement with the town for that pump station.
So an easement that allows the town to go on there and use the pump station?
Yep. It's a town-owned pump station.
It's a town-owned pump station, so somehow we have to get to it and be able to maintain it and things like that.
Yeah, and the propane tanks as well.
So I, I guess just one concern I have right off the bat is if there are parking spaces that are in and along that easement or somehow affecting that easement, that means we're giving up potentially part of our legal right, which I don't know that the planning board has the right to do. I think that would actually have to either be the Board of Selectmen or through town meeting. You know, usually town meeting gives the Board of Selectmen the opportunity, the ability to alter easements and to take easements, but, and then maybe Kate can give us some opinions on this too and, or town council, but I, if we're changing, if we're allowing something to be changed on an easement, I don't know that we have the authority to do that. Just.
Yeah.
That's an initial just thought, just seeing it.
Yeah, uh, Eka, this is John. Um, I, the call isn't insubstantial change is a real stretch. I think this is clearly meritorious and full site plan review. But, eh, eh, you know, I was trying to, my first question was where is this? Now I figured out where it is. It, it looks like it's a place right before the town on Johnson Street. I believe the place, it's an office building that's completely empty now. I, I may be wrong, but I think it is or close to it. And I'm scratching my head and the big question I have is why does the parking have to increase so dramatically if the size of the building hasn't changed? Like, I can't instinctively get my arms around that.
What was described to me was the, they.
Sorry, Jean, why don't we let the applicant go? It sounds like a good question for the applicant. Deb, you're on with us.
Great, yes, I am. Deb Colbert with Hancock Associates. Our client has tried to lease this commercial building for over a year and a half and has not been successful. And every time someone has come in to approach him, he, they have said that the parking is insignificant, is not substantial enough. Um, currently, the parking spaces are actually not, do not meet the town's regulations of width. Uh, they are spaced out at eight and a half by eighteen. So we're proposing to restripe the existing, and when we do that, we lose a parking space, um, from nineteen down to eighteen. Uh, so the client, yes, currently there is one, um, office that is being used in the commercial property, but he has had a very, very difficult time in order to find clients to come in to either lease or even buy the property. And every time a client has come in to talk with him, the heat, they have spoken over and over again about the lack of parking, enough parking spaces. Um, our client also did go to the DPW and engineering to make sure that we did, that he did get approval from them to add the parking spaces. And this, um, this letter was the first that we, we had heard back from them in regards to, um, not putting in some of the spaces, but we're, we're more than happy to abide by his wishes. Um, the property, originally the permit site plan was in two thousand and one, and that was prior to him owning the property. So, um, he's more than happy to add landscaping out at one fourteen um, and provide snow storage. Um, we also are going to have to go to Concom with this, obviously, because it's in, um, the fifty-foot no build and hundred-foot buffer.
Okay.
So I guess, my net of it is, eh, thank you, that's helpful context. Doesn't necessarily answer all the questions, but this seems a lot more to me than an insubstantial change, just, just my opinion. I mean, and I think it may in the end be very meritorious, it'd be fine, but it, it just feels like it requires a little bit more due diligence, especially given all the easement issues and the pump station issues and so forth.
Thank you, John. Uh, Aaron?
Uh, yes, um, just looking at the site plan and having just done a drive-by of the site, what is the, the, the proposed parking out towards the front, towards one fourteen? How close is that to the street? It just looks like it'd be tremendously close to the street.
No, this street is actually approximately, the, is approximately twenty to twenty-five feet from the property line. And then from the property line, we are putting in a five-foot landscape buffer. And then, um, we were going to put in an infiltration trench there, but now we're just, we're, we're reviewing that more thoroughly, and I believe we're going to just have seven feet of landscaping, and we're going to have to add a catch basin. So.
And where?
You have a approximately, that's all right. You have a, we have approximately twenty-seven to almost thirty feet from the edge of one fourteen.
Okay, and, and where would the proposed snow storage be? Would that be on-site?
Yes.
Where?
So now we're go, we're going to have to, um, probably take out one of the parking spaces, and then also as you come into the property, um, just on the right side there, and then, um, in the islands.
Okay. All right, that's all I had. Thank you.
Uh, Peter available to talk? Nope, uh, we'll go with Kate.
Nothing else to add.
Okay, Kelly, anything?
Uh, this is Peter.
Oh, thank you, Peter. Kelly? Okay, and that's you there, Kelly. Um, Kelly, anything?
Uh, yeah, I just had one other thing. Um, is reconfiguration of one fourteen going to extend this far down or does it stop much, uh, closer to Lawrence Line?
The, the project runs to Willow Street, so just near Stop and Shop. It doesn't go anywhere near this far down.
Okay, okay, no, that's right. Thanks.
Um, so from my perspective, I agree with John. I, I don't think this is insubstantial. I have significant legal questions about making, um, adjustments to a site plan where there is an easement owned by the town. I, I really, I mean, if this were to go forward, I think we would need a legal opinion on what we could do uh, versus what would have to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. Um, but I don't see it as an insubstantial change, uh, either way. Um, so doesn't really make, I mean, we could find that, get that opinion, but it doesn't. Either way, it wouldn't be insubstantial to me, so, um, I think that's John and I's sense. Um, Aaron, Kate, Peter, do any, do any of you feel it's insubstantial?
Well, I, I, I don't know if, um, I, I think my concerns would be and why it should maybe warrant additional review just to, to see if o- other town departments, like say Fire, are, are on board with it.
Okay, so you'd be in favor. I mean, again, yes, we're not, right now, we're not passing judgment on the actual project. It's just whether or not it can be done without a full hearing. Um, so you seem uninclined. Peter?
This is Peter. I do not think it's unsubstantial.
Okay, Kate?
No, I don't think it's insubstantial either.
Okay, so then, um, so again, we're not making a decision on the merits of the project. I think if, to go forward with it, I think you have some questions to answer. One with DPW about their concerns, two about the easement, and three just about plantings and all of the other things that Jean raised. So I think there's still work to do, um, but I think the board's perspective is that it's not insubstantial. Um, I don't think we need a motion, right? So, I mean, I think that's just the board's position, so I don't.
Can I ask a question?
I would prefer you do motion it, and can I just make one comment in, to Aaron's question? So Deb, if this goes forward, I, I just don't see how you're saying that the parking is being perpendicular to one fourteen has a twenty-five foot buffer to the property line. I mean, the dimension.
Okay, no, the, the question was how far are we from the edge of one fourteen?
For the parking spaces, right?
Yeah, the question was edge of pavement to the parking.
So from the property line to the parking?
Property line is going to be seven feet.
Seven feet?
Five to seven feet, yep.
Okay, and Deb, did you say you wanted a question or comment?
Um, yeah, so since it's, you're leaning towards not, uh, insignificant change, do we need to close out the old permit site plan? Or do we need to add to the old two thousand and one permit site plan? Application?
I mean, you could talk with Jean more about that, but I think you would file for a modification of the site plan.
Yes.
Okay.
Water management in addition to the landscaping and the snow.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so can we get a motion to deem, um, the request not insubstantial? And, yeah, to deem it not insubstantial as to, um, twelve seventy Turnpike Street?
I, I will make such a motion.
Motion made by John?
Second.
Second by Kate. Okay, John, vote as to whether this is, um, can be deemed insubstantial.
I vote yes.
Okay, votes of, yep, uh, Peter?
Um, phrase again what the question is.
Uh, the vote is that this is, uh, not deemed an insubstantial change, therefore requiring, uh, site plan modification. I also vote yes. Um, Aaron, I skipped you, I think.
Yes.
And Kate?
Yes.
Okay, so this is not an insubstantial request and would require a full, um, site plan modification hearing. Thank you for bringing us, and hopefully we'll see you again, okay?
We will see you again. Thank you.
All right, great.
Take care.
Thank you. All right. Uh, for High Street RCG West Mill NALC, applicant requesting insubstantial change to the approved definitive subdivision plan. Uh-oh, in order to reference the survey subdivision plan of land prepared by Conico Engineers and Scientists dated October fourteenth, two thousand twenty. All right, what do we got here?
All right, so this request came in somewhat late party afternoon, and we actually reposted the agenda in order to include it. Um, I, hopefully Brian Vaughn is on to speak to this request. Um, in your packet, you do have the recorded decision for the West Mill subdivision. The, the, some, some concerns were addressed with the registry deeds in terms of recording those plans. And so what the applicant did was actually attach the definitive subdivision plans to the notice of decision. You'll see them as part of the recorded notice of decision. And Brian's going to track it to what they'd like to do in terms of getting the subdivision plan itself recorded as a plan number.
Jean, this is Tanya. Brian's actually not on tonight. Um, this is Tanya Hartford with RCG.
Okay.
But I can explain, and then I also have, um, Tim, who's the surveyor from Conico Engineering, who can explain the minor change. So, um, so you all approved, um, in the subdivision plan, the lot layout plan, which was, which is sheet C one oh eight, a tie and bond had created, very civil engineering firm. Um, when we went to go record that, the plan was not a recordable plan because it didn't have all the meets and bounds, and the registry, and it didn't have a survey, a surveyor's, um, certification on it. So we, um, we had Conico, who's also done, who's, who's done all of our survey work to this point at the West Mill over the last probably decade, um, came and, eh, onboard to do, to take tie and bonds CAD drawings and draw the, um, a survey that then could be used as a official subdivision plan. When we went to go review the subdivision survey with the C one oh eight plan, we found that the lots were slightly off, and it was due to an error on the part of the civil engineer. They're very slight, um, accounts for, I think, a nine hundred and thirteen. They're very slight. Um, it accounts for, I think, a 913 square foot difference in lot area two and some slight discrepancies just because the roadway, um, lines were not taken all the way to High Street. So, uh, what we would like to do is record this survey, have Jean endorse it, which you guys have given her that authority, and record this as the lot layout plan for the subdivision and reference the C108 plan, which was approved in the decision. We just can't do an affidavit that says they have the same plan because they're slightly different.
So how will it be referenced?
So we, um, uh, there is an affidavit that, um, Brian Vaughn had drafted and that, um, that the surveyor will sign and it will say that the, um, survey is, um, is based on the plan that was approved from C108. There, that was approved by the planning board. And that was, that was done by Ty and Bond. Or, I mean, on the, on the flip side, actually, if you guys approve this subdivision plan, we actually may not even need the affidavit. So we could just say, you could just say this is the, that you could approve the subdivision plan as the lot layout plan or the subdivision plan. You could, you could approve that as the, as the plan that divides the lot.
So it seems to me that a reference to 108 would just tie it back to the decision and the plans that are recorded with the decision. I mean, that would be my preference, but I'll defer to the board.
Jean, what was, I'm sorry, what was your preference?
To, to somehow refer through that affidavit back to the C108 plan, which was what was approved as part of the whole plan set. It's the lotting sheet for the plan set for the definitive subdivision that is attached to the notice of decision and recorded as the notice of decision, not recorded as its individual own plans page.
Okay. Um, so we have a small discrepancy in the footage and the lot lines. And not a big deal. We just need to figure out the best way to make it so it's official with the registry. Is that the gist of this?
Yes. Yes, that's correct. And Jean, and, and I think Jean, you know, wanted to make sure, and I think, I, and I agree that we would like to make sure that the board um, approves this survey as being almost the same as the C108 plan. Just, it's just these, these slight discrepancies in the lots based on the, um, the mistake of the civil team.
Okay. So we can approve it as an insubstantial change, approve the survey subdivision plan.
authorize the planner to endorse it.
Authorize the planner to endorse it as long as she's, um, comfortable with the affidavit and references to the, uh, original, um, approvals. Is that, that fair, Jean?
Yes.
Okay. We get a motion to that effect?
Uh, one moment. This is Aaron. Um, do we, are we going to get a, a surveyor's stamp on this plan? I don't see one on the, on the copy that's online.
Yes. There would be a stamp on the Mylar that I would endorse.
Thank you.
And then we'd get a copy back from the recorded, recorded Mylar comes back to us in paper format.
And the surveyor, um, Tim, you're on the line here. Do you, actually, there is a, there is a surveyor, um, in the left, bottom left corner. That's where Tim will stamp it. Do you, do you see that?
Yep. I got it. Thanks.
Yeah. And then, and so he will have that. And then he, Tim also is going to sign the affidavit as well. Who's our surveyor? And I should just note that the, uh, see what the plan that you all approved was based on the survey that Conico had done prior. So, so all the, for the most, so everything meets. It was just when the roadway was drawn, that was the issue. So.
All right. So, uh, can we get a motion?
Uh, yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay. John makes a motion to approve the insubstantial change. Allow the planner to sign off on the survey subdivision plan. Um, once the affidavit and, um, plans adequately reflect the uh, references to the original permits. Motion made by John. Could we get a second?
This is Aaron. I'll second.
Second roll call vote. John?
Yes.
I've, or Aaron, sorry, I skipped to Aaron.
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Yes.
Okay. Approved. Kate recused herself on that one.
Thank you.
For the record. Okay. Great.
Thank you, Tanya. I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Why don't we go to Trinity Financial?
Good evening. This is Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Jim Keefe and I am a principal at Trinity Financial in Boston. I'm joined with you tonight by Mike Lozano, who's Vice President for Development at Trinity. And we have Peter Tam, who is a partner at Wilson and Stars, and he's leading the entitlement process. Uh, we also have two folks. So we have James Wang, who is Vice President for redevelopment, and we have Patty Schrader, who's a Senior Vice President for Strategic Partnerships. So that's our team. I know we have, uh, quite a crew tonight. Um, I would like to, uh, kind of go back to the beginning. Um, we looked at keeping the original Royal Crest and, uh, we did a study, a fairly extensive study and determined that that was not economically feasible. So we were then encouraged to look at a master plan process. And the challenge there was the master plan had to have a value, an underlying value that was equivalent to the value of Royal Crest. So we're going to tear Royal Crest down, rebuild, uh, properties of the master plan. They had to have, uh, some equivalency in value, compounded by the fact that in order to build anything there, we would have to demolish the 50-odd buildings that are there now. So that's kind of been our challenge. That's what, uh, the team has been trying to juggle, uh, for the last two years to try to make that work. We also have a couple of other objectives. From the very beginning, it was emphasized that the, the town really wanted us to be bold. They wanted us to be creative. And they wanted above all maximize net revenues to the town. Uh, that was very much, uh, in the forefront of our minds as we mixed the program and then tried to do that. Uh, the third thing, of course, and let's not forget Merrimack College, although they're certainly having their challenges today. Uh, they're an incredibly dynamic college. They're growing in leaps and bounds. And our intent was to build an important, uh, residence facility for them on our site. Their alternative was to build it on their site, but they would rather not do that. So those were kind of the, the three challenges. I think, uh, as we go through this process, I think we are going to, uh, demonstrate that, uh, we have met those challenges. I certainly hope so. We're going to really dedicate ourselves to doing that. Um, I want to step back for a minute before I turn it over to Mike, who will be giving you more of the details. As you think of this in big chunks, we have a, a, a market rate multifamily piece of about 608 units. And there we see matching up with the existing Royal Crest of 588 units. So we see that as, as basically a replacement. On top of that, we have the, the, the 40B component, which is 385 units. And, you know, that obviously has some benefits to the town, but bear in mind that if we don't, uh, implement a 40B package here, the town is, is going to have to deal with 40B going forward. And in that, it's probably going to be vulnerable to 385 units or more. So here we are able to do it in a way that's planned. It's part of this study. It's part of a master planning process that will be fully vetted. So that comprises the multifamily component of this development. On top of that, we're talking about, uh, senior housing, independent living for, for seniors. We have heard in, in our travels that there's a expressed need for that in, uh, in, uh, North Andover. And then, of course, we have, uh, the, the townhouses. And, and again, uh, we're talking about families, people have raised their families in North Andover and who have children who settled in the area and they want to downsize into something more manageable, uh, easily, more easily maintained, and they want to be near their grandchildren. So that's a significant component of it. The last two components are the, uh, the retail, about 50,000 square feet of retail. We're very pleased to be, uh, able to incorporate that, a, um, a hotel component, which we think will really add a, quite a bit of, uh, of, uh, value to this. And then, uh, last but not least, we have the, the student dorms. And, you know, as we all know, there's a lot of students living there now. This is an opportunity for us to put them in a, a manageable facility where they'll, uh, have less impact on their neighbors and will be more under the control of Merrimack College. So it's, it's been a balancing act for us, uh, trying to, uh, capture the value of what's there. It may be hard to believe, but what is there is significantly valuable in addition to dealing with the demolition. But I think what you're going to see when we go through this process with a fiscal study, you're going to see this is going to be significant net contributor to town revenues. And of course, I think it's in everybody's interest to take care of Merrimack. So that's kind of the rationale. That's kind of the balancing act that we've put into place. And, you know, we're really pleased with where we came out. I think you're going to see as we go through this, this, there's not anything really quite like what we're planning. That was one of our struggles. It was one of our missions given to you, uh, given to you in the last meeting. We think this is going to be special. We think there isn't going to be anything quite like this because it wasn't anything quite as good as what we're proposing. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike Lozano and, and Mike is going to kind of walk you through the program and, and, you know, answer whatever questions you could have. We know this has been very much in your mind.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you, members of the board. Um, I know that there's a number of things that we want to discuss tonight. Um, you know, I, we've laid out a, a, a presentation about some real world sort of scale comparisons to what we're talking about so that people can get a sense of, um, of, of exactly what we're talking about. It's already been built and, and already in some communities, just like North Andover in Massachusetts.
Uh, hey, a, a quick question while you start, and I, my apologies. Are these projects you've done or are these just projects?
So these, it's a, a combination of both. It's a combination of both. So we wanted to touch on, you know, both projects that we think are representative of the type of stuff that we're talking about, at least in scale, in size of the acreage, um, and in some cases in use and, and intensity. But we've also got some examples of things that both Trinity has done, Aimco has done, and Trinity and Aimco has done together. So I'll get into that. Um, and then I, I've got, and I, I believe you, you have in your packet a very detailed spreadsheet showing, you know, the breakdown of our proposed program with, with all the details. So I'm happy to go through that line by line if you want, or a broad overview. You guys can let me know how you want us to approach that. Um, I'm prepared to do that. Um, and then I know that there's, there has been questions about process and schedule going forward. So we're prepared to talk about that. And I know that, that Jean has put in, in your packet, um, you know, proposed schedules that we've talked about and, and we're happy to talk about. So Jean, I don't know if you've got, uh, the ability and, and Mr. Chairman, uh, to share screen. It looks like you do. So that's great. Can everybody see this?
Well, Mike, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. Okay? So the people on the call can see what you're presenting.
Okay.
However, this, um, meeting is being audio broadcast to members of the public. So members of the public cannot see the screen. So what I need you to do is while we're all looking at it, I need you to identify in the, it can only be things in the packet, which it is, and identify which document we're looking at and which page we're looking at so that people can actually follow along at home if they would like to.
Got it. And very happy to do that.
Right.
So, so what you're looking at here is just the cover sheet of our presentation about real world scale, you know, comparisons to the type of project that we're proposing here at Royal Crest. This is just an image and actually an image of one of our buildings that we're proposing in this new town green that would be right adjacent across Route 114 from Merrimack College.
Hey, Tom, can I interrupt for a second?
Yep.
Okay. So what we need, what, what we need to happen, Mike, is we open a document, is tell the public that the document name in the packet is, is a PowerPoint preservation, presentation, REV, RC, Scale Comparison 10 dot 20 dot 20 PowerPoint. Okay. So that everybody can find that link in the packet and open it up. And that's for the benefit of John and Peter as well, because this revision came in late today. So there's actually two scale comparisons in the packet. One of them starts with REV for revision. So that's the document I have opened and I'm on the cover sheet.
I'm on page one of REV RC Scale Comparison 10 20 20 dot PPTX.
Okay.
Thank you.
So this is, this is one of our proposed buildings and sort of the entry to our site. But as you can see, there's, you know, again, we're looking to, and as we've talked about with, with the board and others, we're looking to maintain as many of the mature trees, um, and as, as much green space as we can. But a, as I'll get into it, that's one of the things that we think is really unique about our plan. Uh, Jean, if you could go to the next slide, please? So the next slide is an image of, um, Indedham, Indedham, Massachusetts. So this is.
Page two, by the way.
The page two. So this is Legacy Place, which is, you know, sort of a retail oriented, uh, uh, lifestyle center. In the image, you can see the sort of yellow shape, the yellow outline. That's almost exactly the size of the existing Royal Crest property and what we are proposing. So you can see.
How many acres is it exactly? And how many other acres of commercial are directly abutting to it?
Uh, there's a lot of commercial abutting in it. This is, this is approximately 76 acres, which is exactly what Royal Crest is. So this particular project is over a million square feet of retail. Um, it's got a Costco, um, it's got a number, it's got over, well over 3,000 parking spaces. But there are some, some residential components, either part of this project or directly adjacent to it. Um, there's approximately 600 apartments to the north, or I guess it's to the east on this, on this particular plan. And there's two.
Are they, are they included in the 70 acres or are they separate?
I believe that those were permitted separately, but we're looking for trying to do.
You're, you're doing apples and oranges. You're showing us a dimensional thing and you're saying there's all the retail included in there and the apartments included in there. Now you said the apartments aren't included in there.
Well, really what we're just trying to show is some scale comparisons. So we're just trying to show, you know, developments with these adjacencies and, you know, trying to show what, what we're talking about here.
So, well, well, why don't we just let them go through each of them? I mean, I can tell you, I was, I, I was, I was at Legacy Place last week. I don't think it's a good comparison and I don't think it's a good comparison for you. Um, it is a shopping mall on steroids.
We, we agree. We agree completely. This is not what we are proposing. We wanted to show that there's projects of this scale that are out there. But, and that this isn't something totally new, that there's other communities like North Andover that stuff like this is being done in. But this is not what we are proposing, actually. You can see in this image that it's acres upon acres of surface parking. It's very traffic intensive. There are no pedestrian connections. There's very, very little in the way of buffers. There's a small, you can see there's a small, single-family neighborhood, um, sort of a directly adjacent to this that, you know, i- i- there's, there's no buffer between this. We think what we're proposing is much better than this. But we wanted to show that, you know, projects of this scale are not, you know, they're, it, the scale of this is, of what we are proposing is not unique. It's definitely out there, but we want to show how we're wanting to do this better.
Hey, Tom, this is Peter.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
We can.
So, um, I appreciate the, uh, coverage to show scale. But I have to agree with, uh, John here that, um, I am not suggesting that I consider this to be what they propose. I just, it is so dissimilar in so many ways that I don't see the point. This is immediately adjacent to an interstate highway with on-ramps right there.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'm not sure I see the real. Yeah, I agree. I'm not sure I see the relevance of this particular one.
I could go on, so.
Yeah, let's just move to the next one. I don't see that this is relevant either.
So let me just make one more. Here that the answer is that we just want to show scale. I can't understand the relevance of the attempt to show scale with this type of comparison.
Well, what we're trying to do is show what you can put in seventy-seven acres of land. Not very well, but nevertheless, one of the points that we're trying to make is to get people to appreciate just how large this site is. It's very important to understand what's in context. We're not proposing this. We're just saying this is seventy-seven acres of land in Dedham, and this is what they did.
So, I mean, we're not going to tell you how to present your project, but I'd much rather hear about your project than-
Okay.
So I'll quickly go through this. Again, you know, this was something that we heard, that was something that, you know, would be beneficial. So we're, I'll just quickly go through this and we're happy to answer any questions. We're happy to take your comments, too, and it's well noted. You know, again, we, this is just to show seventy-six acres and what's out there in a comparison to scale. But-
Okay.
But your point is well taken.
Next.
So Jean, if you could go to the next one, please. So this is Market Street in Linfield. Again, as indicated by the yellow shape, this is approximately seventy-five acres. Again, you know, this was formerly, this was formerly a golf course. So it was open space, more or less greenfield development. And you can see it's very surface parking oriented. It's a lot of retail, but it's a pretty intensive use. And we wanted to just show, again, that, you know, projects, seventy-six acres, what sort of is out there in communities like North Andover. But again, we're not proposing this. You know, this is a little bit better planned. There's obviously some buffer around it. There are some mixed-use elements here that were permitted as part of this.
So what's the acreage of Market Street?
It's approximately seventy-five acres.
Okay, all right. So, I mean, if we leave it there, I think that's at least, that's the relevant point, okay?
Right, right. And so again, but again, this is very surface parking, you know, intensive. You know, it's something, we really want to create something different, which I'll get to towards the end when we start to, you know, get closer to what we're talking about. But again, you know, you can see this is a very traffic-intensive, parking-intensive type of plan. This is not what we're proposing.
Right, so but Market Street and Legacy Place, they're completely different ideas of what they're trying to do there, right?
Yeah.
And Legacy Place is pretty much just shopping.
Yes.
Market Street is shopping, but with a more walk-around feel. Like, you don't really walk around Legacy Place, you drive from place to place.
Exactly.
Market Street, you can walk around and they have the ice skating and stuff like that with a little bit of the residential as an accessory.
Exactly.
What we're talking about here is more of a proposal of residential and the dorms and the retail as an accessory, so.
That's right.
Okay, so I mean, I just think that's the more brilliant points to focus on.
Yeah, I get you, I get you, and we totally hear that. Jean, if you could go to the next one, please. So this is, this is an interesting example that we found. This is in Westwood, this is University Station. And we wanted to include this because it's approximately the same size. Again, the yellow indication is approximately seventy-five acres, just about the same size as Royal Crest. And it's got about two point one million square feet of building square footage. Again, roughly equivalent to what we are proposing. But again, it's a much different idea. Again, it's dominated by a Wegman supermarket that's approximately a hundred and forty thousand square feet, just for that. A gigantic Target. It's really stripped retail-oriented with a lot of surface parking. But again, you start to get a little bit more of the multifamily. So this has a six hundred and fifty-unit apartment building as part of it. That's five stories. There also has a limited-service hotel as part of it and a senior age-restricted housing component as well. This is not what we are proposing. We don't think that this is a really great model, but it's something that, again, starts to show the scale, that there are mixed-use sort of developments all permitted at the same time. That's at least similar in size to what we're talking about. But again, what we're talking about, we think, is a better model. So Jean, if you could go to the next one. So again, this is Hingham Shipyard in Hingham, obviously. This is a little bit larger site. So the red indicated shape is about a hundred and five acres, but it's got a nearly twenty-acre MBTA parking, surface parking lot, right in the middle of it. But again, we wanted to show that there, you know, there are projects of this scale. This was all, again, permitted nearly at the same time, or at least as part of a master plan. But this one has a lot more housing component to it. So this has a hundred and twenty apartments as part of it, some of it permitted under Friendly 40B. It's got a hundred and seventy condos and townhomes. But again, it's got a lot more retail than we are proposing. It's got a lot more, you know, vehicle, car-traffic-intensive uses with about three hundred thousand square feet of retail. So Jean, if you go on the next one. So this is, this is an interesting one we found. And, you know, we've heard, you know, people sort of refer to Assembly Row. And we wanted to kind of show this because this is not what we are proposing. This is a much, much denser, denser development. But it's got some elements that are very similar to ours. And actually, there's some things here, when you look at the previous examples and you look at this, you know, this starts to create more of a walkable, you know, lively neighborhood at the street level. And if you've ever been here, you know, it's a lively place with a lot of activity going on. But this is, this is a much, much denser development. You know, this is forty-five acres. It's a smaller site, but it's got twenty-one hundred units of housing and buildings that are up to nineteen stories. It's got one point seven five million square feet of office. It's got eight hundred thousand square feet of retail, a hotel. You know, obviously, there's an MBTA orange line station right here. It's more transit-oriented. But, you know, there are some good elements here. There's very little surface parking included with this. All of the parking is accommodated in parking garages. And you can see there's a more thoughtful, you know, a thoughtful approach to sort of the public spaces, the green spaces, which is something that we actually like. So we wanted to throw this out there just so people can, again, get an idea of scale towards what we are talking about. Jean, if you could go to the next one?
Yeah, God, yeah, yeah, God.
Yeah, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So just remind me, what's the total number of units of housing in the proposal for Royal Crest? Just what's the total units of housing?
So the total units for housing that we are proposing, again, over this entire master plan, is one thousand three hundred and ninety-one in overall the types of housing, which I can get into. So I'll go through this presentation, and I'm happy to get into sort of the nuts and bolts of the program, start to go through the details, and happy to talk about that as much as you and everybody wants to. So, and there's just a couple more slides here, so then we can really kind of transition to our proposal and what we really like about it. And then we can talk about the specific elements. The next slide is just an image of a project, actually, that Aimco has worked on and is currently working on, a big master plan in Denver, Colorado. Again, not really a great analogy to here, but it's something we wanted to show that, you know, our team has worked on very large-scale master plan projects, a little bit like what we're talking about with elements about what we're talking about. This one is obviously a lot different. But we wanted to show that, you know, the team's got a lot of experience in projects like ours, in projects that are bigger than ours, in projects that are smaller than ours. You know, the team has a lot of experience. But this particular one is adjacent to the Anschitz Medical Campus in Denver. It's a very large, up to fifteen million square foot master plan. So there's a lot going on with this one. We just wanted to show that, you know, we've got some experience.
Just a quick FYI, and I don't mean to belabor, is that the area that's close to like the Pepsi Center, or what part of Denver is it?
I believe that this is a little bit outside of the downtown core. I don't think it's right near the Pepsi Center.
Okay, okay, thank you, that's right, thanks.
Yeah, this one is in Aurora.
Yeah.
It's in Aurora, and it's got the medical center, children's hospital, and a school as well, University of Colorado Medical School.
It's a great project, not totally like ours, but something very ambitious.
Well, so what I did, this is Aton, is that, obviously, Assembly Row is giant, but when you are in the midst of it, it is very walkable and very friendly. Seeing it from the outside, it's pretty overpowering.
Yeah.
But the, one thing I don't particularly like about Assembly Row is the green space. It seems to mostly be all kind of on the outside on the perimeter, whereas this Denver plan, the green space is interspersed throughout, which I think is much preferable. It's nice to have dedicated green space, you know, it's kind of a side, but I think the green space is in between for a town like ours as opposed to a city where you may want to have more of the buildings right next to each other for ease of connectivity and driving is much preferable.
Yeah, and that's a great point. We, I appreciate that comment. And I think when we get back to our plan, which we will in just a couple of slides, you know, it's something that we've really tried to concentrate on. And we did want to keep the green space on the perimeter, and we'll get to why we do that. But we do have those moments of green space within the site as well, which I think is really important. So Jean, if you could go to the next one.
This is slide eight now.
Yeah, slide eight. So this is just some images of projects that Trinity permitted, built and worked on in Boston. So again, this is not like an exact analogy to what we're talking about here, but we wanted to talk about Trinity's experience. And actually, we worked on this together with Aimco. So Jim, I don't know if you want to say just a couple words about-
Yeah, I'm sure some of you who have commuted into Boston and the North Station area, the master planning exercise here was done by none other than Charles Bullfinch. But when they built the Central lottery and they built the Green Line, Green Line Viaduct, all of that was wiped out. And some of you who are, some of you old enough to remember, and then the big dig came along and it demolished all of that, put it underground, and it yielded seven development sites for which we competed on. And the building to the left is called Avenue. That was the first building built in the Bullfinch Triangle as part of this Bullfinch master plan that's a hundred and fifty years old. And among the last buildings built is a building that we developed with Aimco. These are all over the Green Line, they're over the Orange Line, they're over the Central lottery. Very complicated buildings, very complicated sites, very environmentally sensitive. But we wanted to share this just to give you a sense of how we've worked together successfully in the past in fitting buildings in context.
Right. So Jean, if you could go to the last slide. So this is slide number nine. And again, this comes back to our plan. So if you remember some of those earlier slides that were really surface parking-oriented, did not have much, if any, green space, that is not at all what we are proposing here. We just wanted to show that, you know, projects of that scale of seventy-six acres, you know, they're out there and they're in towns like North Andover. But we're excited about what we've got here. You know, we really wanted to create something unique, and I think we've done that. And we're happy to hear your comments and continue to, you know, answer your questions. But to your point, Mr. Chairman, you know, we took a lot of, we made a lot of efforts to really maximize the green space here, and not just, you know, for the sake of doing them, but they're doing something real. So around the perimeter of the site, you know, we've actually pulled the buildings, our proposed buildings, back further from the site, the property line than exists today with the existing Royal Crest. So we've got a very significant buffer around the whole perimeter of the site. It preserves all of the wetlands along the perimeter of the site. And, you know, it creates a nice buffer between our site and the single-family neighborhoods to the north.
Can I sort of pause for a quick second about that?
Sure.
First of all, wherever there's wetlands, you can't go into them anyway. So you're not doing anything that, other than that you could have done otherwise. But can you tell me the difference? I mean, you're talking about a buffer from the property line. What is typically the buffer from your building to the edge of construction and then to the property line? And how much different is it in many respects than what was there before?
Yeah, it's approximately a hundred to a hundred and fifteen feet. You know, in a lot of cases, there's mature trees around that perimeter, and we're looking to preserve the vast majority of them, particularly around the perimeter, but other places in the site as well. If you know Royal Crest, and we've shown images of it before to you, there's over fifty-five buildings there now, fifty-five apartment, smaller apartment buildings, and a number of garages and maintenance buildings. Several of those, you know, maybe up to a dozen of them, are actually closer to the property line than these buildings are shown here. And several of them are actually built into both the buffer zones in the existing wetlands, because they were built before the wetlands by law, you know, took effect. Or in some cases, they're actually built in the no-build zone in the wetlands. So we're not doing that here. We've intentionally made some real efforts, particularly around the perimeter of the site, to avoid that condition. So in some ways, we're improving that. But beyond that, you know, we're organizing the site around this new town green, what we're calling a town green. It's something that we're really excited about. The retail space for the proposal is sort of centered around that, along with this hotel. And it's a public space for people both who will live here and shop here, but also, you know, others. You know, it'll be a really nice place to grab a cup of coffee or, you know, meet people. And it's something that we think will be a real positive for the town. But I'll pause there. I think, you know, you've seen the plan before. I know that everybody is really excited or certainly looking forward to get into the details of the program. So I'm happy to answer any questions about this presentation, or we can, you know, jump into the details, however you'd like to do that.
I'd like to see the proposed schedule and then we can make decisions from there.
Okay. So Jean, do you have that? And can you pull that up?
One second.
So there's, so there's two schedules. And, you know, these were prepared by Jean, but we've-
Let's see, what do we look, can we give the name of the, what's the name of the document we're looking at?
So this is in the file as the ATM zoning amendment calendar dot PDF.
Okay.
The file name, ATM zoning amendment calendar dot PDF.
Thank you.
But this is, historically, I provide this to the board each year to try to set the stage for milestones associated with zoning amendment articles. And so this has our annual town meeting as May eighteenth, and then you kind of back up- And so this has our annual town meeting as May 18th, and then you kind of back up from that date. Which would require us to have a legal ad to the Tribune on February 4th. And as you know, that legal ad has to provide a pretty good description to the public as to what this article, warrant article would involve. And materials would have to be available at this time for the public to access. Either in person at Town Hall or electronically. And so, as you know, the legal ad prints twice would be the dates, the public hearing would open on February 23rd. Historically, especially for something of this size, the board has kept their public hearing open for three meetings. At a minimum, and so this would put the third public hearing on March 16th, a really important date because the warrant would close on the 22nd. And the Board of Selectmen would make their warrant recommendations on the 5th. So that would be your last meeting scheduled prior to the. The April 5th meeting where the Board of Selectmen would make a recommendation. And of course, they always look to have your recommendation before making theirs, at least the vast majority of the time. That leads to the Finance Committee makes recommendations, the warrant gets distributed. On the 26th.
Okay, and can we see the the schedule for what we're gonna look at and when?
Now, I'm going to open the Proposed Project Review Calendar PDF. That's the file name, Proposed Project Review Calendar PDF. And this is just. I wanted to make sure that. It included all of the presentation of relevant elements that you thought were warranted. And so, as Mike said, he had submitted a draft, mine's a little, there's a few more topics that I have included that you may or may not want presentations on, but. In speaking earlier today, Mike indicated that he thought he'd have the traffic report available to share at the November 24th meeting. And if that is the case, I would recommend moving traffic up and or fiscal up. So those, in my opinion, are the two. Elements that would require peer review prior to recommendations being made. Stormwater. I don't think necessarily required because they'd have to comply with mass regs. For stormwater, but traffic and fiscal, I think, is a broader concern for the entire community. So what we could do to advance peer review on that, I think, would be really. And so a little dug in there at the beginning, if the information is going to be available, and then, like I said, I just called out as many relevant elements I could think of. And peer review would run concurrently, beginning November 1st, if they could provide the information through the.
Okay, and where do we stand with the working group and how's that going and what's the plan there?
Okay, so we met last week with the working group, John or Aaron. I provided kind of a summary of that meeting. Do you want to?
Kate, why don't you do the honors because you're on a roll?
Okay, hold on one minute. I'm just gonna stop sharing. So I can go to other documents. Sorry, just give me one second. I want to open that up. So we met last Thursday and as discussed, Dick Allen Court is the representative from the Board of Selectmen, Aaron and John Simons are the representatives for Planning Board. Council Suzanne Egan, myself, and Andrew Shapiro, the Director of. Community and Economic Development all participated in the working group. So on the October 16th, the group reviewed the current zoning zoning for the site in residential five zoning. And other zoning districts already existing in the zoning bylaw, which may be applicable to this project. So I kind of did a high level review of. The Osgood overlay, which was put in place for the redevelopment of Osgood Landing in about 2007. We have a bylaw associated with the historic mill area where we had to actually carve out a subject. To our downtown overlay to account for the uniqueness of the mill area, building configuration and potential build out of vacant sites. We talked a little bit about the plan development district. And so those are all kind of within our own bylaw, we're comfortable with, where. We permitted under those. Bylaws. The group also discussed aspects of the master plan and housing production plan that are relevant to this project. So Andrew Shapiro provided a. Excel matrix kind of calling out different objectives and strategies. And and tied in the ones that are relevant to this project. The group then specifically reviewed the Osgood Smart Overlay District, multi-use overlay districts as adopted by other towns such as Sudbury and Salisbury. And other plan-based overlay districts. We discussed the fact that the plan-based zoning allows for the town to promote. The town planning interests such as density, site plan, uses and design. And also provides predictability and certainty for the developer. So plan-based type zoning. It's kind of puts zoning in a format where if you check all these boxes, your design, your dimensional setbacks, your scale of buildings, articulation of buildings. If you check these boxes as presented in the bylaw, you just move to plan approval as opposed to special permit requirements. And so we talked a lot about this hybrid type approach of maybe. Plan approval components in addition to special permit components if the use was so large, you know, larger than the. The plan approval use. So if a restaurant was 3,000 square feet, it might require a plan approval, but if a restaurant is 15,000 square feet, it might trigger special permit requirements. What we decided to move forward with the consensus was developing a smart growth plan based on zoning bylaw. For discussion purposes, and so the path forward, we felt was that hybrid type approach. It's very similar to what the Osgood. Which was the 40R, although this wouldn't be a 40R, the mechanics of a zoning bylaw would, we think, be fairly similar. And then looking at all those other ones that I referred to, like Sudbury and Salisbury. And pulling in things that we think are viable from those as well. So the group also discussed the timing, as we just did here today, reviewed those two calendars. And discussed the importance of peer review for both the fiscal impact analysis and the traffic study. It was suggested that information related to comparable projects with similar density would be helpful, which is what the applicants did present tonight. As well as information regarding the developer's market analysis. The group is going to meet on a weekly basis, will report the progress to the select board and the planning board at each meeting. So John and Aaron, if you have anything to add to that, please do.
Yeah, this is Aaron. I just say that you're on the the zoning component. I know there's a question in the last meeting about. Yeah. Trying to, I guess. Keep the zoning simple, maybe fold this development into an existing zoning district. And when Jean went through the criteria or the the. The. The allowed uses of, you know, the existing R5 that the the site is on. And and a number of other existing. Zoning districts that that are. Are already on the books and it was just felt that. You know, we'd either be. Yeah, if if we're trying to to fold this into an existing district, we'd be allowing, perhaps allowing uses elsewhere in town that. Maybe wouldn't be what we wanted to see or 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 wouldn't, we wouldn't be. Meeting the needs of the developer and this is in terms of allowing uses that the that they have already. Said that they they would like to see in this development. So so that's the, I guess, the rationale behind. As Jean said, trying to tailor the 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 draft zoning for this. As either an overlay or its own zoning district.
And I will add to that. So we we did talk about how the overlay, all the overlay may not be consistent. And and so as with the Osgood overlay, there were sub-districts, sub-districts that allowed for residential mixed use, it allowed for commercial only, it allowed for. A. Kind of more of a commercial residential mix. And I think. It's really early, we're just starting to craft this owning, but I envision something with sub-districts kind of similar to that format.
Okay, great. John, anything else that on the on the working group?
No, I think it's well put. I think that both Jean and Aaron's comments characterize sort of how broadly we're looking at this. I I think. Everyone, I think it's a good mix of people because each person contributes a different perspective that's very helpful and, you know, with Jean's leadership, I'm sure we'll. Make it through pretty successfully.
Great. I had a couple of questions about the revised program summary. So could we talk about that?
Sure.
All right, so I'm referring to in the program summary. Folder, revised program summary 10 2020. So the, so I see in that that you have residential units at 1391, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Compared to existing Royal Crest units at 588, correct?
Yes.
Why are the dorm units broken out separately?
Only because it was a little bit difficult to sort of. Merrimack's total need is 1,000, is 1,000 beds. And, you know, we're, we haven't designed the building, obviously, so it's it's a dormitory. We think it's going to be apartment style. You know, an apartment style dormitory, but we haven't really gotten to the specific design of that. But if you were, if you were to make it an equivalent number of units to apartments, it would be approximately 250. We were figuring that there would be four beds, two students per bedroom, two-bedroom units.
So I think that would be helpful to amend the chart that way or somehow reflect that in that same column. Because when you were talking earlier, you were saying a lot of. Merrimack students currently live at Royal Crest, right? Those are part of that 588. So it just seems to me that even if it's an estimate, just known it as an estimate, but it should all be in the same column. Because otherwise, you're looking in one place, you're looking in another place, and that 1391 really isn't 1391. It's more like 1650. But and if you want to make it known that that's an estimate, that's fine, but I think we should be comparing 1650 to 588, not making a value judgment. But I just think those are more realistic numbers.
Yeah.
So that was one thing. Who would own that dormitory?
So again, it's it's early on. We've had pretty substantive discussions, though, about. What would be essentially a sort of a P3, a public part, public-private partnership. So typically, these dormitories are developed with a nonprofit partner. So Merrimack and it's to utilize, if you want to get into the weeds, it's to utilize tax-exempt financing.
Well, here's, but here's my question then, about taxes is if it's owned by the college or through nonprofits. Then it might be non-taxable from our perspective and we're not getting any financial benefit from it.
Yes, that's right. And and that is likely the case for this particular part of the plan, but that is being taken into account in the fiscal impact.
All right, I just want that to be clear about where we're getting if. Really don't like when we get told you're gonna get $10 million, just throw it out a number in. New taxes and then someone comes and asks for it, but someone comes and asks for a TIF later on and someone comes ask for this. Or says this is coming off the tax rolls. Let's give us your like your worst case scenarios of what we're actually expecting. And if we get more, let us be pleasantly surprised.
Yeah, we're we're 100% with you and we don't want to be putting out any numbers in that respect that we can't deliver on. So especially because this is going to be peer reviewed, we know that. We hear you 100%.
Okay, all right. So just be clear on that. Okay, so those were the two kind of points I had on that. So I mean. I get what you guys were doing earlier or trying to do with the density, but to be honest, I throw those slides away and not use them again. Just because when you first see them, you're like, oh, my God, that's what it's gonna be? That's not gonna fit here. So. I think it's, I don't know, if you want to figure out some other stuff, like what is 76 acres, you know, okay, it's this this. Park or this, you know, school or this, whatever it is, that would be better than actually showing.
It's about 76.
Right, you may be better, exactly. You maybe it's better showing us something that's completely not related, just so we can understand the size. Because I think you're right, people don't know how big Royal Crest is when you drive by. Great. But don't show us Legacy Place because that's the only thing that people are gonna remember.
I'm not a fan myself that.
For what, it's great for what it is, it's just not this.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so 13, I mean, I think we're gonna have to really drill into that 1391 plus the 250 of what that means for. Traffic. What does that mean for schools? What does that mean for fiscal impacts and our services? I mean, those, and how tall are these things gonna be? View view corridors, things like that. I mean, I think that's what we're gonna be looking at going forward and just as you go through the working group, say, okay, what meeting do we have coming up? When can we present this and how best can we present this so everyone understands what we're trying to do?
Yeah, and if I could, Mr. Chairman. We have met internally with our sort of civil and traffic engineering team. And they're very close in having the report ready to go, likely by the end of next week. So as soon as we get that, we're gonna distribute it to you guys so you can take a look at it. If there was to be an earlier meeting in November, a special meeting, we'd be happy to go over the traffic. And some of these other things at that meeting. And the the fiscal impact analysis as well is moving very rapidly along. So we'll be, we'll be very ready very soon to talk to you in detail about that.
So I I mean, I I personally would be forward, especially if we can get you earlier in the evening and be a little fresher. I think that would be a great thing. One other thing that I just was thinking about that at some point we may want to put together is like a FAQ sheet so that. So people, how many units is it gonna be? What's it gonna be like? I mean, that that might come at the end. But I think there are going to be these, especially like reviewing some of the butter comments. I I do want to make sure we get to all of those questions that people had. And kind of put it in kind of one document to answer questions for people to the extent we can.
We we typically prepare those.
Okay, great. So I mean, I I think the schedule looked pretty good to me, and if we can get an earlier meeting and have stuff to do, that would be great. So it might be make sense to kind of just check and see where we're at in two weeks. And then if things are gonna be ready, then schedule a meeting. You know, the second or third week in November.
Okay. That'd be great.
Aton, to piggyback on your comment about the butter comments, so the one that did come in last meeting and there was several questions listed, that is included in the packet. And so if you could provide written responses to that so that I can get back to him and put that response in the next meeting packet, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, absolutely, Jean. I did actually reach out to that individual as well, offering to sort of, you know, talk about anything. Related to the project that that they want to. So I'll get you a written response, but, you know, it it's an open invitation. To to, you know, talk about whatever, whatever details this this butter or any other butter wants to talk about.
Okay, do we have any other board members that want to make any comment questions?
Yeah, this is Aaron. I just have a couple of questions regarding the program summary.
Okay.
So first of all, I I see, you know, we we have existing Royal Crest Estates residential units. We don't have any square footage numbers. I think that'd be helpful to see, given that it's supplied in detail above for the proposed development. Just for a true comparison, it seems like from this sheet. The the existing. State of affairs is just, it's it's lacking. You just, you know, with the number of units, I'd appreciate seeing that in the future.
Okay.
And then I just wanted to go over, you know, you've you've color coded this for in terms of phasing, and I just wanted to see if I understood it correctly. And the fact that. When you got going with this, it looks like you're, the the 40B and the student housing would be the first. Of the buildings to go up. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And then you'd move on to the the market rate, multifamily. Get that complete before you proceed further.
Yes, yes.
And and then and then it's on to the 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 the, I guess, senior housing, for lack of a better term. The hotel, the town square, and then you'd get that wrapped up and then the town homes. And the offices would be really the the last of what was done. So that we're talking, that's like years out. So I just wanted to make sure I had that. That correct. So I just wanted to make sure I had that, that correct, correct in my mind that that's how you really see this development happening.
Yes, you are correct there. And obviously it's early and this is projected and, you know, there is some, some possibility of change. But we think, we think that this is a pretty solid plan. You know, one of the challenges that we have is that we've got an existing apartment community. And, um, you know, we, we both have to accommodate the existing residents, um, and work through a transition with them. But also, you know, while we're building this, we want to keep the existing, existing property operating. So our engineering team has worked out the plans in order to do that and are continuing to do that. But your, your, um, your read of the phasing is absolutely correct.
To, to add one to that, and I don't want to hold it too tight, uh, a date on that, but over what period of time would the existing housing be spaced out roughly?
So the, the total projected timeframe for the plan is eight to 10 years. Um, so obviously we would decommission buildings, um, for the first phase of this, um, relatively early, but still, you know, years from today, you know, we're still two years away probably, or a year, at least a year and a half from shovels in the ground in sort of a best case scenario.
What we're anticipating is assuming we get a favorable board of town meeting, it'll take us a year to, um, uh, get through MIPA. It'll take us a year to do the necessary engineering. So if it's 21, uh, and with town meeting, it'll take another year to 22. We had all those permits and everything else in place. So at the earliest, you know, April, May of 22, and probably more realistically, the summer, one of the things that we're aiming for is we have to tie the student housing into the academic year at Merrimack. That they have, uh, obviously this needs to be built and furnished, uh, by the time the students come back in, in August. So that, that's going to be a major milestone in terms of when we actually start this, in order to get it built.
Right. No, I understand that. I guess what I'm trying to understand, and again, I don't want to hold it to find a, uh, point. But for the existing buildings, will you take them all down at once? Or will you take them down gradually over a year?
Number one, we don't have to. And number two, um, we want to preserve some number of them in order to be able to successfully relocate the existing residents such that, you know, they have someplace to go. We are going to be demolishing, and we can get into the details of which buildings we're going to be demolishing. But we want to keep enough running and operational in order to be able to move people into those.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I just, okay. So it sounds like it's going to be over an extended period of time.
Yes, yes, it will.
Gene, in our calendar, where would we talk about, uh, impact on schools? Would that be part of fiscal? Because it's more than just how many kids. I mean, obviously that's a big question, but where would they go? How are they spaced out? Are they all going to the same elementary school? Do we need more teachers? Do we need to get someone from the school department in to weigh in? So where is that in the calendar? Anyone could, I guess, come away on that.
So our focus in the fiscal analysis that we would like to meet with the superintendent and work through, uh, those kinds of details. To my knowledge, I think there's been one meeting and there's going to be another, but hopefully those kinds of informations, Mr. Chairman, that kind of information would come as a result of those conversations with the, the school.
Be part of the fiscal.
Heck, yeah. Yeah, that's correct.
There will be money in our analysis to, uh, to, um, address any kind of impact.
But historically, we would invite Jim Bailey to a meeting, so I should add that into the calendar. So.
That's what I'm looking for. Yeah. We, when we've had projects of larger sizes, it's important to get someone from the school to come in and say, okay, we agree, we disagree, we think it'd be this many kids. This is what we would do with them. This is where they would go to school. Would we have to add teachers, et cetera, et cetera. So I just want that to be somewhere in the schedule.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, Peter, anything at the moment?
Thanks. Yeah, thanks, Aton. I, I think this has been asked before, but I, I want to make sure I'm clear on it. On the program summary where it gives the, uh, total proposed units of 1391. Could you just clarify me for again, again, um, how does the, uh, Merrimack, um, dorm portion fit into that number?
Yeah. Um, and this will be a further clarification, which I'll redistribute to Gene and, and then to the board. But, you know, it, it's sort of, it's, it's classified here, it just as beds, because that's the way that Merrimack has looked at it. But if you translated that into apartments, it would be approximately 250. So I, I will, I will make that revision. So it's clearer here and get that back to you.
So it's not included here. It's 1391 plus 250.
That's right.
So it would put it around 1641 if your conversion is correct for total proposed unit?
That's correct. Yes.
Any other, uh, questions, Peter? Okay. Uh, Kate?
Kate has recused herself from this.
Oh, she is. Okay. Our neighbor. That's right. Uh, Kelly, still here? And I think she has, okay. Anybody else have anything they want to say?
So I, hey, I have one other question. I didn't know this before. The wide and a lot of these charts that says structured parking. What does that mean?
Yeah. So those, those are parking garages. So we, we had to, in order to do the F A R calculation, we have to, you know, differentiate between surface parking and structured parking. You know, even though it comes at expense to us, we're, we're in favor of structured parking because it allows us to keep more of the site open. Um, and have more green space. So, um, you know, we've included that here in the calculation. So you can see that.
Okay. So that's parking garages that.
Yes, that's correct.
Which I said in favor of as well.
And I, and I think when you see some of the, uh, we get into proposed elevations, you can see how we can wrap these garages such that, um, the appearance of the garage is really minimal.
Aton, could I just point out in response to Aaron's question regarding gross floor area for the existing?
Yeah.
We, we don't have that, but included in the packet, there is an analysis for pervious versus impervious surface. So we didn't show that document, but it is in the packet, and that will inform you somewhat in terms of, you know, hardscape versus existing versus proposed.
Yeah. And I, I will track down the existing sort of square footage, um, and add that to this in the next revision, just so you can see it all in one place.
Okay.
Oh, this is Aaron. Also on that topic, we talked about a little bit earlier, but having, um, a document, uh, something on paper that states what the existing, um, greenscape buffer to the adjacent neighborhoods is, and what is proposed would also be helpful information. Again, to have on paper, not just saying it, well, you know, it's around X number of feet or, you know, having it documented.
Yeah, yeah. We do have a plan that shows the existing overlaid, the proposed, and I can dig that up. But we can also, I can also put some, some, some dimensions on that. So you can see the differences.
Let's get that, that visual would be very helpful.
So within last meeting's packet, I'll add it to the next meeting's packet. And what it showed was an overlay of the proposed buildings over the footprints of the Royal Crest buildings. And so it's very visual. I'll add it again. It was in the last packet, but we just, I don't think we got to that detail.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Well, I mean, this is good, good work, good progress. And just, let's just keep pushing forward.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, members.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, let's do, uh, planning board meeting calendar. Gene, you want to tell us about that?
Sure. So the calendar is in the packet. Um, it's been adjusted to account for holidays, elections, um, annual night out. So the, all the typical things that we try to identify ahead of time.
Should we really? I mean, annual night out hasn't happened for like three years now. I mean, I don't mind an August holiday, but just saying.
Up to you guys. I, um, at the time we were having it, there were a couple of board members that felt strongly that they wanted to attend that. And I agree, it hasn't been held, but we're not happy that it hasn't been held. So.
All right. Let's, let's leave it off for now. We can always add a meeting if we need to.
Does everybody have vision to the document in the packet?
Yeah, I, I didn't see any conflicts.
This is Aaron. I have no comments. Looks fine.
Okay. And given we don't know how long we're going to remain remote, we've done a comparison with the zoning board of appeals, which sometimes we bump up against their calendar. So we've maintained that only one meeting can be held in a remote atmosphere. So we, we shouldn't have any conflicts there.
Did you, we have no sense of, I guess, yeah. I mean, it would be nice at some point to at least be able to have some people, uh, in a room together, but we'll cross that bridge when we come to it, I guess. Though I have seen, um, just, just as a note, other towns holding their meetings in like the public library and spaced out, things like that, different places, um, just to, you know, just as ideas. Okay. Uh, and can we get a motion to approve the minutes from October 6?
So moved.
Moved by John.
Second.
Second by Peter. Uh, John, uh, rock all vote?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Okay. Nice job today. I, we got a lot of good work done today.
Aton, can I interject? So John, at the last meeting, um, you had missed it. So you should have a missed meeting form that you need to sign and send in to us.
Yep. I, I will send to that. Yes.
Okay. I don't think you missed any public hearings at all, but it would be helpful.
Yeah.
We closed some, but nothing, do we continue? Um, okay. Uh, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Oh, before that, this is Aaron. I had a quick question.
Okay.
Just to keep you here all a little bit longer, uh, with the, with the, with the topic of Royal Crest, it came to mind, um, the master plan implementation committee, um, what's going on with that? Um, I haven't heard anything.
Kelly? Kelly's telling us something very interesting about what's happening.
Kelly, Kelly, do you want me to step in? So Aaron, the, the group has had two meetings. The third meeting is scheduled for Thursday night. They've spent a lot of time looking at existing goals and strategies in the report and trying to organize them in a meaningful fashion in order to be able to report out on them. They're charged with providing the planning board and the select board a, a report. And we anticipate that happening sometime in November. Um, so we, we've actually have a report drafted to review at Thursday's meeting. And so I, I would say they're moving along. They're kind of breaking out goals and, and each individual has their own skill sets and their own affiliations with existing, um, commissions and boards. And so they're trying to align and prioritize the goals in a meaningful format that can be conveyed to the public and to the boards. Good, Kelly? Okay.
You know, I had a question, um, about that. Do we, do you anticipate any other at this point, potential warrant articles or proposals coming forward, either from us or from the town or from other individuals? I mean, we're not super far away from when we would normally be kind of getting those and expecting those.
So some of that will depend on how the implementation committee prioritizes things, I think. Cause there's certainly a lot of the master plan suggests zoning updates.
Okay.
I will say that I personally have been given a goal to look at the wireless bylaw and, um, try to come up with something reasonable that would hopefully steer people into acceptable areas if, if some would deem those. So we are going to meet with the town manager, the staff planner, Dan Beckley, has actually done an outstanding job kind of researching overlay districts, what's happened in the past here in other towns and other towns bylaws that have some conditions, um, that we think would be probably very helpful. So minor updates versus maybe a rewrite with an overlay we're internally looking at. Um, so we're meeting with the town manager on early November to try to get some direction as to how he sees this progressing.
How about that signed by law? That sounds like what a, something a staff planner could look at.
That, um, yes. So we have appointed him in that direction because there's also like 10 other things where you're hoping that he could advance as well. So, um,
Okay.
Suzanne Egan, um, is aware of the sign balla update. The last she communicated was she had some ideas. And so I do have to circle back with her at some point.
Okay. At some point too, it would be nice to get an update from Suzanne and also on some of the litigation stuff. I know I saw that she had an update or a executive session with the board of selectmen about the middle field, middle school fields either coming up or I don't know if that got canceled or on an agenda somewhere. So at some point it would be nice to get an update.
Okay.
Just at some point, you know, when it's, when it's, if you could just check in with her, if, if it would be worthwhile, if there's any news.
Yep.
Okay. Let's go watch the World Series.
This is Aaron. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And watch the World Series. Okay. Motion made to adjourn and watch the World Series. We got second, second. Uh, John?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll vote yes. Do you want to see that Mookie Betts guy? Wish the Red Sox could get players like that.
I know. How come we don't get players like that? I was thinking of that.
Who was the second on that vote?
Uh.
Kate.
Kate.
Thank you.
Motion made by Aaron, second by Kate. Okay. Good night.